Good morning. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Roll call, please, Mr. Scott.
Sue Laramer.
Here.
Erin Bennington.
Here.
Kelly Eubank. Gretchen Downs. Ray Pullman.
Here. Would you all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you could go to adopting the proposed agenda, may I have a motion for that, please?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Bennington.
Yes.
Mrs. Laramer.
Yes.
Mr. Pullman.
Yes. Okay, at this time, I'll go to superintendent's report. Mr. Hustler?
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate everybody being here this morning. Wanted to give a little bit of an update, and while it loads, we just want to, again, express our appreciation for everybody during this back-to-school period. There's been a lot of exciting things about the beginning of the school year, and certainly, in a sense, the COVID changes that have happened as we've gotten into the fall have unfortunately caused us to have to make some changes, and we wanted to talk about those, talk about what's happening, and more importantly, talk about the process that we're using so that families, staff, and community members can understand and know how we go about doing the things that we do. So it's an important part of what we do as a district in terms of COVID and keeping kids and staff and families safe, and we wanted to provide a little bit of an overview for that today. So since our last board meeting, we had, at the last board meeting, we reported that there were 68 new cases that week, August 12th. Last week, we had 173 new cases. So the difference between our last board meeting and this board meeting, we've gone from 68 in Wood County to 173 cases. Wood County on July 26th, just to give it some framework, when we were talking about our back-to-school plan, we had eight cases in the prior seven days. So when we began to talk about returning to school, being in a very good place, not having to mask, and really looking forward to a more normal start, I think that was the phrase that we used, we just had eight cases in the whole county that were new. And today, we're, of course, at 173. And then the county is reporting 210 cases per 100,000, and at the last board meeting, that was 111.62 per 100,000. So, again, things are changing here in the county, and we've understood through this whole COVID period that when things are changing outside the school district, we know on the inside of the school district, we see those changes as well. So here's, on the, Wood County does a great job, the Health Department documenting these things, so this is something that is shared as of September 2nd. We're waiting for that update, of course, this week to see which way it's going. I wanted to point out that it says 210 days per 100,000. Also, on the website, it talks about the very high transmission red is 100 or more. So we're actually double that number, 100, in terms of transmission. And then, of course, this is the data from August 12th, which is the slide that we used at our last board meeting, and then going back to July 29th, when we had just presented our plans, you can see that the numbers were relatively low, and we had 25.3 cases per 100,000, you know, in July. So part of the, and then, of course, July 25th, we're averaging 11 cases per 100,000. So I just wanted to provide that context, you know, because we're hearing from people, why are we changing? What's changed? And so our school numbers are also mirroring those increases as well. We've been sharing that, and we'll talk a little bit more about that. This is what it looks like for Wood County in terms of the cases. So from the left is when we began, on March 20th of 2020, and you can see the high point, that was the November, December, January period, and then you can see where things began to fall off. And now, in the far right-hand corner, you get to see what it's looking like coming back to school. So we're kind of approaching that October feel, in November, early November. And I want to just highlight this, because I think this is a question that we're hearing, and that is, well, when are we done with masks? People, and I understand, want to have, like, a hard number, you know? Is it the number 12? Is it 24 per cases? What is that number? And I think the first thing I want to point out is, the orange circle on the left represents what it was like at the end of last school year. So at the end of last school year, we were getting fewer cases. We were beginning to change restrictions on, you know, things that were happening. We went from every other day at the junior high and high school to every day. We began to do these things, and it was because we were seeing and feeling this decrease in the schools and also the community. And you can see now where we're seeing this increase beginning to happen in the county and also in our school district. So the first question in terms of when can we talk about masks going away, I think we have to hit a plateau. And right now, since school has begun, as you can see here, we've not experienced a plateau, certainly not a decrease. Last year, when we saw this decrease begin, that's when we had those conversations about, let's making these changes to what we're doing in school. But while there is an uptick right now, it's not very realistic to say, let's talk about getting rid of masks, when we're seeing that kind of sharp increase in the schools and also the community. So we'll refine that conversation as we talk to Wood County Health, and we continue to look at our ZIP code, the data of what's happening in schools. But right now, for us, looking at where we were in the spring when things were getting better, to where we are today, where things are increasing, getting worse, we need to see that level off. We need to see that begin to at least taper off, so that we can begin to have a conversation and set up some benchmarks. But while things are increasing, it's going to be very hard to discuss, you know, the need for reducing things in terms of what we're doing as a district. There's been talk about the legal authority, you know, who's responsible, you know? The districts, I know board members get a lot of emails talking about what they should be doing and what they shouldn't be doing. So I thought this was interesting, but Ohio Revised Code 3707.16, it makes clear that quarantined persons are not permitted to attend public gatherings. So the law says, no person isolated or quarantined for a communicable disease declared by the Board of Health of a city or a general health district or department of health requires isolation or quarantine shall attend any public, private, or parochial school or college. So when someone is quarantined, people have asked, why do we have to do that? Why can't we do something else? Because the Ohio Revised Code in this section specifically says, if that has been deemed a person who is either isolated or quarantined, they shall. And again, when we talk about policies, and I know, Ms. Laramer, you've been part of the policy committee, and, you know, there's a difference between should and shall.
Yeah, yeah.
So this is important to note, that the board isn't mentioned as having that authority to determine what students should isolate. So that is something that is a tricky thing that we have to walk with the Health Department in what we do. And again, it doesn't specify the Ohio Department of Health, it talks about the local Health Department. So I think it's important to keep that in mind as we begin to talk to people about what we can and can't do as a Board of Education. Since the last board meeting, this is a letter that over 80 pediatric and medical doctors signed and shared out, urging school boards, private school leaders, educational leaders to wear masks. And this is something that I think is significant, because at the last board meeting and others, we've heard a lot of people's opinions, and those are certainly important to us. But for us, I think that when looking at pediatric and medical professionals who work with families and children especially, for them to sign on to a letter like this, it certainly means a lot. So when you begin to scroll down the list of folks that have signed on, I know a lot of families visit many of these doctors, and when your child is sick and not doing well, it certainly, you know, those are the people that you take your child to and say, help me. What advice can you give me to help my child? You don't turn to your local banker, you don't turn to your mechanic or your realtor. Who do you find? You go to your doctor. And so for these folks to say, this is an important step for us, I think it's notable. Also, since the last meeting, a number of the area schools have published a clarification with quarantine guidelines. I know the governor spoke, and we appreciate different flexibility he's provided. And so, beginning on August, September 7th, which is something that the process will talk more about, but we're talking about, and we've mentioned this before, but we wanted to clarify it, but if a student's wearing a mask, exposed to someone who's positive, and that person's wearing a mask, there is no quarantine that goes with that situation. And we'll talk more about that. And it talks about the buses, and then the lunchroom. So those are the areas, and then with athletics, of course, that's a little bit different than a classroom exposure. We want to really stress that if you're sick or not feeling well, you know, you're having cold, flu-type symptoms, cough, runny nose, we'll let our Debbie go over those in more detail, but stay home, because it's something that, it's better to be on the safe side, because we're having a lot of people that are coming to school, and then days later, turns out that they're COVID-positive, and there has to be contact tracing that goes with that. So at this point, I'd like to turn it over to a day in the life of a COVID team member, and for the beginning of the school year, we only had one member on that team, really, and that was Sarah Stockwell. So I'll turn it over to you, Sarah. Thank you.
Thank you. Ooh, that's loud. So I was thinking, back when Mr. Hustler was talking about the decline this summer, and I thought, boy, did we all really enjoy that. That was so nice. So, but here we are. So coming back to school, we're definitely grateful there's a vaccine. I think, you know, that protects a lot of our students and families. We are seeing quite a few actually breakthrough cases, where students, staff, and family members are testing positive and are symptomatic who've had the vaccine. So it's unfortunate, but that's our reality. And in addition to that, I guess there's been some significant changes that the county has made in terms of how we contact trace, how we make decisions, how we return students and families to school, that has really increased the COVID team responsibilities and work rather than decreased, unfortunately. So I want to talk a little bit about those responsibilities today, and kind of the reality. I'm going to have to turn, because I can't see over there, and I don't have this memory. So put this together, we talk a lot about contact tracing. I left that blank, because there's about 35 different steps there that I'm going to go over in a bit. So I'm going to talk about the other areas that we're responsible for. So one of those is communication and guidance. Basically, we have to keep our district guidance updated, we have to ensure that our policies align, we have to basically support our nursing staff and make sure that they know, you know, what types of things they need to be doing, and procedures and practices they need to be following. We also have our masking situation, so we manage the KN95 distribution, we make sure that the mask policy is updated, we also manage the mask exemptions, so anyone that requests a mask exemption, the COVID team can be pulled into that and help make those decisions. We also have supply and management distribution, so this sounds kind of silly, but we do manage all of the test kits for the district, cups and those types of things, clinic supplies, any sort of masks that the buildings need, so we have to have some sort of distribution process in place for that, so we make sure that those stay stocked up and everyone has what they need throughout the school year. As far as vaccinations, we have to verify those with the Health Department, input those into the software system, so that we can make sure that if you're vaccinated and you're able to return to work or school after an exposure, that you can. We also coordinate the vaccination clinics with the help of many other team members that we've run here in the district. We also do COVID student health plans, so by this I mean what we've talked about, students that may be medically fragile. So we need to make sure that we're managing the forms and that those are updated, that we're gathering information from the buildings and being involved in those meetings if necessary, and then also attending the meetings and, you know, talking with the families and creating accommodations that make sense for those students with the support of the building as well. Oh, let's see. Managing the COVID email account and the call line, so we're getting the call line back up and running here, and the reason for that is because the calls are coming into the buildings, and they're being inundated with questions from families, as well as central office, and so we need to make sure that families have one place that they can call and get the answers that they need. So that, managing that, there's parent questions, there's staff questions, we do screening sheets, where basically anyone that is symptomatic or has had an exposure, the nurses, the principals, teachers, anyone that can gather that information, gathers that, sends that to the COVID support email. That's also where all vaccination records go. What else do I have on here? Physician notes and test results, so you're able to turn, return multiple different ways. So I'll talk a little bit more about the notifications later, so I'll skip that. And the last one is the reporting and tracking. So we're required, on every single case that we have, whether it's one student or 50 students, we have to send a spreadsheet to the Wood County Health Department, so it's another kind of manual entry for us. We're also required to do, each Sunday, we have a report that we have to send to the county, and then obviously our community reporting as well. So those are just some of the other responsibilities. I'm going to talk in a little bit more depth about contact tracing. This is one of the visuals that's out there, that basically shows a very linear process, that an infected person has symptoms, then they're contacted, asked a few questions, we determine who the exposures are, and then they're sent a letter to let them know to quarantine. So in schools, there's a different reality, and so the reality of that is that there's about 35 steps that we actually have to go through, and probably more. It's not a linear process. Fortunately or unfortunately, we find out more information throughout that whole process that sometimes then we have to go back and start over. Mr. Hustler, if you click on that tracing sheet, this is an example of when we're notified of a positive case in the district. So just to give you an idea, we had four, two that we had to trace over the weekend, and there's two more that came in this morning.
I can see it on my computer, but not on the screen here, so let me exit out.
Okay, I'll keep talking while you're doing that.
Yeah, sorry.
So the difference in a community tracing versus school tracing is we know that students are involved in lots of different activities. So it could be everything from gifted services, special education services, the football game that they attended, who they carpool with, who they hung out with, you know, standing in the hallway that morning before they went to class. So this is an example of a sheet that we make for, this is an example of the student one, and we create this, first, we have to determine when the student was symptomatic, and we have to go back 48 hours from there to figure out when they were actually contagious. So sometimes they're contagious an entire week while they're in school. So we're tracing five different days. These are all of the questions that we have to go through for each student, going in and measuring the classes, finding out who they were with throughout the day, in the evenings, lots of components there. What adults were in the classrooms, or other paraprofessionals in there, other monitors, anybody that we have to be thinking about that may have had contact with this individual while they were positive. So on an easy case, this can take two hours, on a difficult case, this can take several days, unfortunately. It's also challenging, sometimes you're asking a student to remember who they stood within two arms-length of at the football game, when there's, you know, a whole stand of students. So it's, we know that we don't get everyone, we do our best to notify the families that may be impacted. Down at the bottom, there's a lot of questions we have to ask before we even send the quarantine notices. So if we were given 50 names of individuals this student was in contact with, were they all in school? We do our best to check and make sure they were actually there that day, and that they actually had contact. But as you can imagine, it's very tedious and time-consuming to be able to do that. So that's an example of what a contact tracing, I guess, looks like in reality, and again, that's just one of the pieces that the COVID team is responsible for. After that's done, so after we have all of the names of the contacts, then we have some additional steps. We have to input those into our software system, so that we can then create the notifications that go out to families. There are 23 different versions of those notifications, so you can imagine, making sure that you select the right one can be a little time-consuming as well. Once we do that, we have to send notifications to the Health Department, we have to, under the governor's order, we have to do a school-wide notification to the building. This is supposed to be done within 24 hours of a case. It's not happening, just because we, there's only so many minutes in the day, and unfortunately, we're not able to do it. Families are holding us accountable for that. I had several emails this weekend that said, I know that there were cases in this building last week, why haven't you notified the building? We did it, we just didn't do it within 24 hours. So we're doing our best. We also have to field questions from staff that may come up, and from families that may come up. You can imagine, once you get that notification, you have lots of questions. As detailed as we've tried to make that, there are still questions and circumstances that each family might have. So they follow up with us on those. And then the last step in that is just creating what we call return to works and return to schools. And there are lots of different ways that students and family, or students and staff can return to school. This is great, because we're able to get them in school faster, in some ways, and in other ways, it's created a little bit of a bottleneck, because there's so many ways that they can return now. So it, obviously, you can return immediately if you're vaccinated and you have no symptoms, and you were exposed to someone, you still have to wear your mask indoors through day 14, unless you test negative after day three. So what this has created is, I'm vaccinated, here's my negative test, and so now we're managing a lot of negative tests and vaccination records that we didn't have come into play last year. You can return immediately if you were wearing a mask and you have no symptoms and you were exposed. Again, you have to wear your mask indoors through day 14, or through day seven if you test negative. Now, with us having a mask mandate, that has helped this situation.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
We're wearing masks, why does it say through day 14?
So this is community-based, so when we send the notification out, we're sending that under the direction of the Health Department. So even though they're not in the school building, they might be in Kroger, and they have to realize that they're allowed to take their mask off in Kroger. So we're kind of managing both sides of this, not just school. Once, if we ever move to a place where we don't have a mask mandate, this would come into play, because then students would have to know, and that's challenging, I think, for staff to manage. Does that student have their mask on? Is it day 13? Is it day 14? So there's some layers there as well. You can also return immediately if you, if there's a positive COVID test within the last 90 days. So that's what they call immunity to quarantine. You can return on day eight if you test negative, on day five or after, if you didn't have a mask or a vaccination, but you, again, you must mirror your mask indoors for day, through day 14. So again, what we're getting is a lot of negative tests that come in, we have to verify that that was an actual negative test that that student took, and then we have to send a return to school or return to work for that student or staff member. Checking to make sure that it was after day five, and there's lots of other layers there and details we're responsible for.
So Sarah, if you just take a test at home, you just take a picture of it, you come in, or is there more steps that are needed?
Yeah, there's more steps. So technically, they have to run through, we do get a lot of that, Debbie Reddick has said, students will come in with the test that they actually took into the clinic, and she's saying, throw that away, please. But they actually have to take, go through the system, so you use your phone, and there's an online system that you use, and then it prints out specifically for you, based on your date of birth and your name, and then they share that with the school. So that's frustrating, I think, sometimes for families, well, I took a picture of it and sent it to you. We have to make them kind of go back and do that again, so. Day, sorry, do you mind going back one more? So, oh, there's more. On day 11, if they wear a mask for days 11 through 14, again, they can come back to school. This has been great, because we've been able to allow everyone to come back on day 11, and not even really have to give them the day 14, because we're currently in masks. So that gets kids back in school faster. Also, an alternative diagnosis, if you've not been exposed, or a negative test. So this is if you're symptomatic, you have not been exposed, you're able to return under those guidelines. And on day 11, if you're positive and your symptoms have improved, you can come back to school. So again, that is just the returns, which is, takes a lot of time and a lot of work to be able to figure those out, and that's one very small piece of the process itself. This is probably the part of the process that families are getting the most frustrated with us about, because if your child has a negative test, and they're supposed to be at an athletic event this evening, you want that returned right away. Understandably, you want to be able to get your child back, but they might be number 72 in the queue, and so they may not get that for two days, and so that, this has been a challenging piece for us to manage as well.
And if we weren't involved, and the county was doing all this work, how would that change?
It could take five to seven days at least, and the county would, they, the county really doesn't even have funding to do all of this, so there are two epidemiologists that are doing the bulk of this for the entire county, which is why schools are not responsible for this piece. So even though it's two days, it's definitely better than the five to seven that it would be.
Yeah, and I think, you know, one of the things that we're working towards is, what can we do to improve that time? So we have some thoughts at the end of the presentation, so.
Okay, so how does this play out, I guess? Now that we've talked a little bit about our responsibilities, let's look at some real numbers. So our tech director, Matt Schaefer, just did a quick sampling of the COVID email. So there's the COVID support email, that's managed by two individuals. One of those has a full-time job in the district, and one of those is contracted, is hired, I guess, by the district. So on September 1st, there were 398 email exchanges, on August 31st, 370, and on August 30th, 369. So in general, roughly 350 to 400, depending on the day, exchanges in the email. So again, there's two individuals monitoring that. Team member number one worked 76 hours last week, 72 hours the week before. Team member number two worked 51 hours last week, and that person had just, that was the first week they had started full-time. 12- to 14-hour days are certainly the norm. While we tried to set some boundaries around the COVID team, and say, 11 to 7, Monday through Friday, no weekends, no holidays, unfortunately, as you can see from all of the steps, it's not really possible to manage. So evenings, weekends, and holidays are just a necessity if we're going to get students back into school in less than five to seven days.
Just as a point of clarification, the one full-time job duties that the one, team member number one has, that isn't COVID, they're not hired to do COVID full-time, they have another job in the district, and they're doing this in addition to their other job.
That's correct, yes. There's been 39 cases since August 1st. The team has sent 634 notifications already since we started school. Debbie will talk a little bit more about this, but there were 45 screening sheets in a two-day period. And by a screening sheet, what that means is, either the nurse has a student come in that's maybe symptomatic, or they found out they were exposed, but it, sometimes it's someone that tests positive, but it's, it's the building doing an assessment of what that student's needs are, and then that is sent over to COVID Support to make determinations about what's next. 45 screening sheets in two days, our highest number in an entire week in 2021 was 45. So we hit that high number from last year in two days. So that tells me that the buildings are busy, the nurses are incredibly busy, and they're seeing a lot more symptoms, and students, and business, I guess, if you will, in their clinics. So Debbie can share a little bit more about that. I just wanted to give one example to, when I talked about the follow-up, so after we send out a contact tracing notification, and I said there's a lot of parent and staff questions, which there would be. To sort out one of those frustrations last week, I just did a quick sampling of what it took. There was one call from the parent, there were seven emails from both parents, two texts from two different administrators, two calls with the Health Department, and then a text from the athletic director. And this was all taking place in the middle of a day, in the middle of other job duties, and also all of those 400 emails and all the other things that are taking place. So just trying to express the kind of challenge that we're under as a COVID team, and the types of things that, on a daily basis, we're doing. So a case example, on a normal day, I'm going to read through this, because I just, I find it almost entertaining to have put this into bullet points. So a student sent home from, with symptoms on Tuesday by Mrs. Reddick at the high school. So the COVID team gets the email from Debbie, we review the information, call the parent, get additional information that we might need, and then everything comes to a halt, because we now have to do a tracing. So a tracing has to occur, the team shifts gears, because obviously, that is a priority, pulls them away from the other tasks. In the meantime, 12 other students are sent home from the other buildings with symptoms, those need to be reviewed and entered and notified. Two positive students at the junior high are emailed, so those will also need to be traced. We're still doing the other tracing right at this point. The Health Department calls about a case where a parent's escalated. A principal texts with a question, because a student showed up to school, that they see in our software system that says, this student shouldn't be in school because they're quarantined. So they follow up as they should. It's now been a day, so it's now Wednesday, and the original student was sent home, they still haven't received a letter. The student's on an IEP, so the intervention specialist texts the special education team and says, what's going on? Is the student, you know, what's happening? The parent's upset and calls the The parent's upset and calls the school. So, the principal texts and emails the COVID team because everyone wants to know when this child can come back, what the letter will say, do we have to provide special education services while they're out? Lots of questions. The COVID team hasn't skimmed the 50 other, 53 other emails that are in the inbox at this point. So, eventually, the COVID team applies the decision point to the original student, and that notification is sent out. Twenty-seven other emails have accumulated, eight calls have come in from the call line that need to be returned, and four parents are upset because they've not received their return to school and their child is supposed to be attending a game tonight. They are number 67 in the queue. Oh, and another positive test is reported, and the cycle repeats itself. So, that's pretty much a normal day in the life of the COVID team right now, unfortunately. I think the things that we're doing are helping keep our school community safe, but it is a lot to manage on a day-to-day basis, so. All right, Debbie?
So, I, one thing I do want to go back and say that Sarah had talked about is, if somebody has had COVID in the previous 90 days, typically, they are allowed to stay out of quarantine. However, if they're getting close to that 90-day mark with the upward trend, the Health Department is saying, "No, they can't." So, if we're, if we're within a few days of that 90-day, they have not let us keep them out of quarantine, so just because of where we're at with numbers right now. So, as Sarah has alluded to, we have, everything has escalated. I don't know if, well, I'm sure this year is because we started without masks, and it has definitely been obvious in the clinics that that's been an issue. Last year, I, I will say, I think we had one of our healthiest years ever. We didn't see that many kiddos with symptoms. Typically, what we had to deal with were the parents who are, you know, call, are the calls that were made to the schools saying, "I'm keeping my child home for these symptoms." And we would follow up with those and send them a letter just to give them the timeline of when they could return, either alternative diagnosis, negative COVID test, or 10 days from onset of symptoms. That is different this year. We have multiple kids coming into the clinics every single day with symptoms. And one of the things that really makes your ears, you know, prick up is when they say, "Well, it feels like it's my allergies," or, "I always get sinus infections, it feels like a sinus infection." When I hear that, and I know it's allergy season, and I know people have sinus infections, it, but it is like a red flag because those, a lot of times, those kiddos are testing positive. So, you know, it's, it's hard to call a parent and say, "Okay, they've got two or more COVID-like symptoms, we need them picked up." And they're like, "Well, they have allergies, I get it, but right now, we're seeing positives with allergy symptoms." So, they do have to go home on COVID protocol. If they have loss of taste or smell, that one symptom alone sends them home. If it's two or more symptoms, so headache and runny nose, or cough and congestion, or sore throat, you know, sometimes the student will say, "You know, well, I have a headache and, and a sore, or a cough." And we try not to feed them any symptom lines. It's anything else, "Do you notice anything else?" "Well, I have a sore throat the other day, but it went away." And then, you're starting to get another picture. So, we don't say, "Do you have this, this, and this?" We let them tell us what their symptoms are, and then we gauge it according to that. So, when a student comes in and they have those symptoms, we do have to fill out a symptom sheet. I'm going to go back to my day last Wednesday. We had tracings, as Sarah had said. Typically, when, when we get those, those kids coming in with symptoms and we fill out that symptom sheet, I want to get that to COVID Support right away so they can start generating those letters about, you know, when the child can return to school based on, you know, alternative diagnosis, negative COVID test, or waiting 10 days. The sooner I get that to COVID Support, the sooner, hopefully, they can start working on letters. But as you can, as you've heard, they are inundated. So, those letters can be delayed until later in the day. Unfortunately, because of what's happening in the clinic, sometimes I don't get all those symptom sheets filled out because we do have to make a call to the parent, find out, "When did these symptoms start? Are there any other siblings in the school district? Do you know if your child was exposed to somebody who's positive?" If they say yes to that, that's a whole different ballgame. That goes into contact tracing, so then that has to go in a different direction. But it, so it takes a little bit of time to get those sheets filled out and sent in. So, at the end of Wednesday, I'm sending in 10 or 12 symptom sheets, which I'm like, "Wow, now, they've got to do all these letters just for this, these alone. That doesn't even count the contact tracings we have to do." So, let me go back. So, so anyhow, those letters get, I don't want to say all jammed up, but there's one or two people doing the letters, and there's many, many, many that have to be generated in one evening. I know that they had been working till 11:30, 1:00 AM at night, and what happens is, is when those letters are generated after a certain time, the system will not send them out until the next morning at 6:00 AM. So, families are not necessarily seeing the letters at 11:30 at night, they might get them at 6:00 AM. And so, some of the, a lot of these kids will show up at school who have been quarantined. So, last Wednesday at 8:30 in the morning, there were 20-plus kids lined up in the clinic and out the door around the corner. Those were kiddos who had shown up, who were told, "You can't, you're not supposed to be here today," who came to the clinic, and we had to start sorting through, okay, looking at these letters that had been sent out, you know, trying to get an idea of where they were traced to. And, and we don't give out names, it's just like it was an in-school contact, it was at the football game, it was kind of just where, it was at lunchtime, whatever it might be. And call all of those parents who, as you're calling them to say you need to pick your child up, want to know why. And you're trying to go back to each letter and say, "It looks as though they were exposed at this day, at, in this venue, and they need to go home." And then, we'll get, "Well, they're vaccinated, we don't have that vaccination card, could you email it to us?" It's on their phone. So, you have the student pull it up and have them email it to you. So, you can make a copy and write them a pass back to school and send the copy on to COVID Support so they can document it in the OM system. Or, I mean, those are, I guess, the big parts. So, I will say, three days last week, I had to send out an email SOS to my administrator saying, "If anybody's available, I need help in the clinic now." So, to make all those calls is very time-consuming. At the same time, I had four kiddos coming in who were sick. And you're trying to triage and get the ones out that you can really quick so you can deal with the ones who need more attention. By the time I got to the kiddos who were sick, it was probably close to an hour. Three of the four went home on symptoms, so I'm doing symptom sheets for those kiddos. In the meantime, you have your normal kids, you know, your other kids coming in with various other things. You have your medications that need to be dispensed, and you have phone calls, people calling to say, you know, just, just upset parents, I guess, because of the letters, you know, them not seeing them. And then, the attendance secretary is sharing information for students who have been called in sick who have COVID-like symptoms, so I can follow up on those. This goes on all day long. It's, it's, it's nothing but COVID. At this time of the year, our responsibility as nurses is, we've got several top priority things that we're trying to do. We are mandated by the state to make sure that every student in our building is vaccination compliant within 14 days of school start date, which we're way past. So, to make sure that if, in, in my building, all seniors have their senior meningitis vaccine is one thing, but any student new to the district, we have to look over their entire vaccination record. That can be tricky. Sometimes, they come in with no vaccination records. Sometimes, it's a record of one or two vaccinations, but they have to have all the mandated ones. So, we're trying to call other schools, get those vaccination records sent, you know, go through all of those and make sure that those kiddos are compliant as well, or at least contact the parent to say, "These are the vaccinations we still need records of." The other, some of the other things that are probably even more important than that is that we need to go through every student's emergency medical form. So, whether it's on final forms or it's sent in another way, we need to have to see what, what students have various health conditions. And then, we have to make sure that those are highlighted in Power School, a medical alert, and then draft action plans for the teachers that those students will be seeing on a daily basis so that if a student has an incident or an issue in the classroom, it gives the teacher, you know, a course of action to use until they can either get the nurse there or administrator or whatever into the classroom, or until we can get EMS in the building. Those things are imperative for a teacher to know. It's imperative that, it's put in a subfolder in case a teacher has a sub, so the substitute knows to be, you know, aware of these students. That hasn't been done yet, and I can't leave my building feeling like it's safe until I know that everybody knows those medical conditions. We generate food allergy lists for our cafeteria so that they know if a student buys something, that pops up on their screen and, and they won't sell it to them or give it to them because they know that that could cause an anaphylactic reaction, which is life-threatening. Medication approvals. We have lots of students in the district who medic, need medication on a daily basis, and that's a process as well. It's not just, "Oh, here's, you know, my child's medication." We have to have the physician form filled out, and it has to be filled out appropriately for us to dispense medication according to law. So, all those things take time, and sometimes, there's a lot of faxing and emailing things back and forth to make sure that it's, it's all set and ready to go. In the meantime, students have to be assessed and cared for as they come into the clinic. So, what I have noticed at the high school is, last year, we started with half of our students fully masked. We did not see the typical viral issues that we, we tend to see when everybody comes together in August, and it was wonderful. This year, because we started unmasked, we got that influx of all this viral stuff that goes around. Do you know if it's COVID or not? You have no idea. I even got a call from one of the local area pediatric offices last week. I thought they were going to be yelling at us about, "Why are you sending kids to see us because, you know, they have this, this, and this?" But that wasn't what I got. It's like, there is so much going on, we need to know what test you guys will accept as a negative test, and they were running out of tests. They had some on back order, they had a few there, but then they were asking us, "Will you accept an antibody test?" "No, we can't because the Health Department says no." So, you know, she, they're seeing a whole lot of illnesses in the, the offices as well, and I feel that they have the same feeling, the same influx that we're noticing this year, too. At the end of the day, as I said, everything's been COVID in the clinics. Still trying to get those symptom sheets turned in, working on contact tracings, finding out where students have been. We are mandated to do any tracings, any reporting of any student that impacts our, our school buildings. So, when we were told that the Health Department would be doing this, it, it made for a nice summer because we thought, "Oh, good." But then, the week before, or the week students came into the buildings, we find out, "No, no, we are still mandated to do that." And so, anybody who is, impacts our school buildings, we are required to tra, trace. So, what's left undone at the end of today, when all you've done is contact tracing, and then you start seeing the letters come through and you're trying to get things in order for the next day so that hopefully, you won't start with 20 to 30 kids hanging out your office door, having to be called to be sent home, is you're still trying to do your action plans for those kids that need, that have medical issues. You're still trying to find out who those students are and make sure that everything's documented and get through all of your regular work. So, it's, you know, been taken home, lots of work every evening, and a lot I can't get or, you know, finish at home because I need the resources at the school to do that. And I've, you know, the other nurses are feeling the same way. It's just, this is a whole different ballgame, it's a whole different job, and we just can't get to our normal stuff, which, as I've said, is extremely important for the health and safety of our kids.
Thanks. Thank you. So, some of these things you'll, you'll kind of recall from what, what Sarah and Deb have both said, but I wanted just to share some differences between the start of last school year and last school year and this year. So, at the start of last school year, we had approximately 50% of our students in the junior high or high school at any given time because we were doing the alternating days. So, that reduced the amount of people that were lining up at the nurses' offices in those buildings, and we had everybody primarily six feet away with desks because we had fewer students. So, that cut down on contact tracing because, for the most part, kids in the classroom, there, there, there weren't that many that fell into that range. Transportation contact tracing was also reduced because we had, you know, packed students, two to a seat every other seat, and we didn't bus high school students. So, that was a factor in kind of slowing that process down. Lunches were modified at the elementaries where they only ate in their kind of cluster with their own classrooms, in their own classroom. And at the high school, junior high, we made some adjustments. And everybody was in a mask last year, and that was uniformed across the district. So, this year, we have 100% of our students in the building every day. We had one remote day every day, so that was a good day that, that students weren't in the buildings. The description of things that were happening with, with contact tracing in the school stopped on that day because students weren't there. So, it was a good catch-up day for, for those that, that were doing the work as just recently described. School buses are transporting all students today. Lunches and cafeteria service has returned to, to normal, and there's variability, as you described. Sarah went through all the different kinds of things with vaccine quarantine lengths and with, or without masks because last year, there wasn't. It was, this is what has to happen. And now, today, fortunately, because it's a shorter period of time, but to manage that, to know, to have the conversation, a touch point with families, to say, "Which, which option do you want?" And, and, and that takes just more time. Looking at last year, we, we kind of ramped up our COVID team. You might recall that when we began the school year, we had a few people that were doing it, Sarah and her role. But then, as things began to ramp up, we pulled in, in, you know, executive assistant from operations, Kit. So, it was, it was both Sarah and Kit. Deb had a very impactful role, but again, she only had 50% of the students in a classroom at any given time or in the school building, so she had a little more time to help. And the other nurses were also very helpful in that process, but we ended up at the high point of having 4.5 people working COVID pretty much for the district every day. We began the school year, as, as Deb mentioned, with the idea that we, we kind of took a step back at the end of last year and the county took over. Because there were so few cases from May to August, for example, there were only six COVID cases of students in our zip code who were in the ages of five to 12. So, they could handle that with their team. And so, we thought, "This is a great summer, and we don't have to do that." We broke up the band, so to speak, because we weren't doing contact tracing. But then, we were told at the start of the year that, "Yes, you're, you're going to have to resume that." And we began this year, as you've heard, with, you know, October-like cases where there's a lot of activity happening in buildings where there are all the kids all the time. So, it's created some interesting dynamics for us as we move forward. So, what we need in terms of help and support, and I'll ask Sarah to step back up, and she has a few bullet points here.
Yep, so, I'm a firm believer that if you come with a concern, that you also come with a possible solution. So, we did brainstorm some different ideas here. I think there's two things that we really need, and I think this is probably directed to the board, the community, and our internal staff. One of those is help. I think that a COVID coordinator to oversee this process, so someone that could dedicate all of their time and effort to COVID completely, not necessarily current employees who also are trying to balance that and juggle that with additional, their, their other job duties. This would do a few things. It would allow the buildings to send some of those things that they're dealing with, so the, the physical contact tracings, the calls that are coming in, the emails that are coming in, all of the notifications, that could shift to this COVID coordinator. If there's a tracing, that individual could go out to the building and do that, so it's not Debbie and two assistant principals leaving their current roles to go measure classrooms. It would be that individual. All of the calls that come in could be directed to the call line that this person can manage versus that going to the buildings overseeing the COVID team and supporting them, making sure our guidance is updated, all of those types of things that I talked about prior in that graphic would fall to this person. I think the other thing that we need is support from our staff members, the community, and the board. So, by this, I mean that calls and emails really need to be handled in the order in which they are received, so not circumventing the process for any reason. I understand that I understand that, I completely understand. I have four boys that were raised in this district. And those athletic events are really, really important. And they're a special part of their life. But that doesn't mean that just because there's a game tonight that we have to circumvent it and the 10 other students that need to return to school to get their education fall later in the line. So not circumventing the process. We did put an auto-response on to let the community know we are dealing with a high volume of calls and cases. And it may take a few days. Unfortunately, what that will trigger sometimes is that a staff member might get a call or a staff member might text us. And so then we're being inundated with texts because they know that the email is going to take a few days. So just respecting the fact that it might take a few days. And it's unfortunate that if your child or you as a staff member have to miss an extra day, but understanding the process. Also, all communication should really flow through the call center and the COVID support email. So texting and calling team members individually just creates a bottleneck in the system that we're trying to avoid. We did try to set those boundaries around the time. So the Monday through Friday, no weekends, no evenings. And I think really just going back and sticking to those, even if we get a little bit of pushback, understanding that everybody needs to have some boundaries around their work life and 12- and 14-hour days consistently for a month is not manageable.
And just if I could jump in with that point. Last year, when we were having challenges, you know, I talked to the health department about what they do. And, you know, they have days where they work and there are times where their staff doesn't work. And so we were, because of the importance of returning students as quickly as possible, we were responding to emails. The team was responding to emails on the weekends, 11 o'clock at night, you know, and working right up until, you know, they would go to bed and then resuming in the morning. And that really isn't sustainable. And we're starting to hear from staff that, you know, we can't have, you know, we can't have that. It's just too much. And so, and this is a group that, you know, in Perrysburg, we never like to admit that we can't do something. So for, to hear those kinds of things is a reality. That, you know, we want to find that balance. And that's why the plan is to try to bring more people into this mix, to help with that, to reduce that time.
Yeah, thank you. And I think one of the challenging things is that some workplaces have shifts, right? So you get the 11 o'clock response and you think that's your second shift person. But in reality, in our team, that's the same person that was responding at 7:00 in the morning. So just kind of helping people to understand that. And then lastly, just encouraging staff members and families to read the away message that's on there. There's really great instructions we tried to build in. I know when I get an auto-response and it's lengthy, I don't read it. But in COVID times, go ahead and read that because it will tell you, if you are exposed, do this. If you are positive, do this. And that's to help them know what to do next when we can't get back to them maybe for a couple of days. So those were the things that we thought about. I think really at this point, this is just our plea for help so that we can continue to serve our community in the ways that we have.
And we understand this has been a challenging year, year and a half with everything that we've been doing. And it was even more disappointing, I think, at the beginning of the year because we had such a great end of the last school year and summer. And now we're back. And I know it's really challenging for families because they're seeing situations where there's concerts, there's all kinds of events that are taking place. And then why is school taking this position and doing these things? Because, you know, going to Churchill's or other types of places, you're not having to quarantine, you're not having to wear a mask, you're not getting contact traced through those situations. And schools are just a different animal. They're mandatory. People don't have a choice, unlike, you know, there's families that are not choosing to do those activities that are so prevalent now. But we're just trying to find that balance, trying to do what we can to get kids back in school as quickly as possible. You know, we can work with Wood County ESC to staff, you know, to add another body. We have one additional person that came on board just late last week. So we have been taking steps to do what we can now. And we want to continue to do that, so, to reduce that time. So appreciate the opportunity to kind of share this morning.
Thank you very much, first of all. Knowing what you're going through on a daily basis with your normal jobs and then having to do this with a full-time staff and a full-time student body attending schools is difficult. A couple of things, and then I'll board, ask questions, too, from Mr. Hostler. Cliff Notes version of all this is, the government has a mandate. The health department has mandates. Schools must follow those mandates, correct? So even though 3:30, schools are out and things like Mr. Hostler was saying, the world continues to live like there's no pandemic, we have to follow the rules, follow the law. So I think that's, the inconsistency that some of the community members feel is not that we're not working hard here. It's that each case is different, too. As you pointed out, each case is different. So I feel for the families who have a situation that they talk to the neighbor about. It's a different situation. And then the board member, you may get a call or Mr. Hostler gets a call. And I understand their frustration. But given the situation that you just explained, I can understand your frustrations, too, how this works out. So thank you for being here and reporting that.
Yeah, thank you as well. I mean, my takeaway is five times as many contact tracing or potential cases out there with three or four times more of the steps that are necessary to track all of that down and four or five additional ways to bring our kids then back into the classroom. So I can see where this work has exploded. And, you know, the word that was going through my head that I wrote down that Mr. Hostler just said was, you know, it feels unsustainable. Particularly in light of, you know, I think the, I know the goal of this entire board is to keep these kids in school, learning every day as much as possible. So I started to get concerns about that path as I hear about this. So you guys are key, and thank you for the work that you're doing there. I've certainly got family members still very much involved in the district. So I hear some of these stories. I hear about kids coming into class with symptoms. Ms. Reddick, question for you. Have symptoms changed at all under this Delta variant? You know, from your experience, from what you're seeing? I mean, this is great, we've got a resource actually in our buildings. What are you seeing that's kind of driving?
I mean, symptoms may have changed a bit, but there's still a general range of symptoms. So our protocol is two or more COVID-like symptoms when they go home. Last year, because we just didn't see that much because of the mask, they had two symptoms, depending on what they were, behind say, I'm going to, you know, go ahead and go home. Not going to put you on symptoms protocol once you watch, other than that's a day or two to see if anything changes. If you, you know, things get worse, if you feel the same thing, I'll say it's a call. And families are a little bit about that. This year, it's like, uh-uh, you know, two symptoms and you're out just because it is so rampant. And we are getting negative tests back, but we're getting positive tests back, too. So it's very much alive and out there. And people's symptoms vary so much. And I think a lot of people have this understanding that because you're vaccinated, you can't get it. You can still get COVID. Hopefully, you get a mild or case. But as Sarah said, we're seeing breakthroughs in some of these people. Breakthroughs are still extremely symptomatic. So, you know, when we're in the past, we can't, that they do go home, it's two or more symptoms. And we're not just seeing one or two breakthrough. And I have two family members right now that are both vaccinated and positive. So we're seeing quite a few, actually, in our buildings.
And Ms. Psychwell, I don't mean to put you on the spot here a little bit, but I know you're good. When you get a case come through, and, you know, some take two hours, some take days. And I'm trying to figure out what are the best behaviors that our community can have when sending their kids or having their kids in school? That contact tracing case that lets you breathe a little bit of a sigh of relief, like, okay, this will be a quick one, this is an easy one, how does that present itself?
So a contact tracing, an easy one?
Easy one, yeah. When you see it come through, you're like, okay.
Might be a student that wore their mask, that didn't come to school symptomatic, maybe just had, wasn't involved really in a lot of extracurricular types of things because that's where we start, when they start getting involved in multiple activities. That's where we see more, I guess. Yeah, are you asking for families or are you asking just like the actual process, how that changes?
Just the process.
Okay, yeah. That's probably the easier cases, I would say, where there just isn't. At the high school, it's much more challenging, junior high, where they switch classes because you're hitting eight different areas. Whereas the younger kids are in one space a good part of the time. So that changes that a little bit, too.
So follow up on that if I could, Eric. So immediately, I could be, return to school or stay in school if I mask up? If I'm masked up and there's an exposure, I can stay in school?
Correct, yep. As long as you're not symptomatic, that is correct. Yep.
Yeah, and I think that's one thing that, you know, as we wrestled with the decision to mask or not to mask. And we certainly respect parents' rights. And that's always important as a parent to have those. But one of the things that we have to balance is, you know, and we've had families say, you know, it's my choice, my child, to wear a mask. And if they choose, if they choose not to wear one and they have to be quarantined in the classroom, that affects my child. And I'm willing to accept that risk. The challenge we have in hearing about junior high and high school, for example, where that child is now going into eight different classrooms. Well, if you have a classroom teacher that has a caseload of, let's say, 150 students, which is probably in the high end of normal. And let's say 40 of those students didn't wear masks, were exposed and had to quarantine, and that's their right. Now you have a teacher that now is having to juggle the 110 students that are in front of them every day, communicating with each of those students who are dropping in and out depending on the quarantine options at different times, rescheduling tests, making sure homework's being communicated. So that not only affects that child, but it also affects that staff member, eight teachers in this case, or seven teachers, and the rest of the classroom because things have to get changed because, you know, there are students that are missing and group work and makeup and those kinds of things. So if it was just a standalone and isolation and that student and that family made the decision and that was it, it'd probably be a very different conversation. But to see what's happened in other communities in Ohio where this has really gone through and, you know, 400, 500 students being quarantined within 10 minutes of here that's happening, that's what we tried to prevent because it affects so much more than just that student. So that's one of the deciding factors with the mask.
And one more question, I guess, maybe Tom, this one's for you. Is the board thinks about the support, the ask that has been brought to us today? You know, you'd said Wood County ESC could be a solution. You know, what, it's what funding's available? If there are ESAR dollars that could kind of be set aside for this? Is there potential for re-tasking somebody internal purely to do this? What's on your mind as far as options for us to consider?
Right. So there's, right now, there's different funding that has come from the state in terms of supporting schools. And ESAR funding is part of that. ESAR 1 and 2, there's different names, but the first two rounds of funding for this has been brought to the school and already accounted for. It's like a grant. We have to fill it out and track it. ESAR 3 funding, I don't believe we've received those funds yet. So, and we're starting to build a list of things that we would like to apply. That ESAR funding, because I know we get this question. ESAR funding, is it based on how many kids we have in quarantine? There were some people that have kind of insinuated that, that we get more money with more kids being quarantined, and that's false. We spent an entire board meeting talking about how ESAR funding was determined and the fact that it's based on the census data estimates from 2018, I believe, or '19, that estimated the number of students living in poverty. And based on that number, Perrysburg was awarded X amount of dollars, which is the sixth lowest in the state of Ohio. Even this calculation that they created estimated that there are more students living in poverty in Ottawa Hills than Perrysburg, which is false because we have free and reduced lunch and other programs that recognize students that are living in poverty. And so we know that that's false. So we're getting that funding. The next round hasn't been applied yet. We're trying to get additional funding because of that calculation error in our estimation. So some of those dollars may be helpful in applying to that. But right now, it's something that we're taking out of the general fund to do that. So working with the Wood County, working through there, maybe provides a little bit of flexibility with salary and other elements of the position. But it is something that we're having to fund, you know, right now out of the general fund, perhaps being reimbursed down the road. But we haven't received that ESAR 3 funding yet, so.
Well, again, you know, the goal of keeping our kids in class as much as possible and keeping them healthy and safe as much as possible. You know, this board committed back in March of, I'm lost in my years now, 2020. You know, the resources you need, this board was committed to giving those resources to you. So I hear the ask and I'm very supportive of it.
I thought we still had some ESAR 1 funding left over. Is that, that's what I read? And one of the, an email that reported that a board member had said that there was ESAR 1 funding still left over.
The report in the last finance committee was 80% of 1 and 2 was spent. So it's like $90,000 or so left, but that's probably already accounted for. It's just a matter of turning in receipts so you can get reimbursed to the district.
Okay.
And everything is accountable and traceable and transparent. So you can't get, uses for COVID, turn in a receipt, we'll pay you for it. You know, that type of thing.
Mm-hmm. Well, you're probably wondering why I've been so quiet because that's not my normal. I'm... This is extremely, that your reports are extremely upsetting to me. I mean, I can feel your angst and your frustration all the way over here because I know I'm frustrated just in trying to deal with what I deal with. And this is... I'm trying to be careful with what I say. I don't understand that. I mean, I just don't understand. Okay, get a grip. I don't understand why you guys are having to go through this. This makes zero sense, zero sense, why our schools are having to do and create all this nonsense. As I sat here and I figured, okay, you said, Tom, we have 173 cases. That was, our school has 173 cases on September 2nd, is that what you said?
No, that's the county.
I don't care about the county. I want to know how many cases we have.
We have 39?
39 cases and we have 5,600 students. I mean, we are turning ourselves into hysterical nuts over 39 students that have COVID. And it seems so insane to me that we are driving ourselves crazy. You guys are exhausted beyond all reason. There is no reason why you should be doing what you're doing. You're a nurse. You're the director of pupil services. Why, why are we going through all of this? I don't understand how we can get a little sheet of paper like this and they're putting in 70 hours a week. That doesn't make any sense to me. This is pretty simple. I don't understand why people can't read this and understand this simple... For people who don't see it, this is the O D H flow chart, sorry. If you're masked, regardless of vaccination, and you have no symptoms and you are exposed to a COVID-positive person, you are not getting quarantined. That's the Reader's Digest version of this chart. Why are y'all going through all of this? It doesn't make any sense. It does say, in the classroom setting. To me, as I read that, it means if I'm sitting here and this is our classroom, well, we're all physically distanced right now. But let's say I've got another table mate here in a classroom. So this is, this is my table mate and I'm over here and this person ends up positive. Obviously, if they're positive, they're out of here. I mean, that makes sense. I have no symptoms, I'm masked, my vaccination status is not relevant. I don't have to, I don't... I don't have to quarantine. So why are you guys going through all of this? I mean, I know it says, "In the classroom setting." It doesn't, it says, "This chart can help guide quarantine decisions after a student or adult contact is exposed to subbing in the classroom setting." If this happens on the football field, why do I even care? It doesn't, you're out there. That, why do you have to go and then trace all the people that they're around at the football game? We're only concerned about the classroom setting. So if I'm here in the classroom setting, and this student has exposed me, but I'm asymptomatic, period, end of story. I don't have to go back and find out the 900 people that they were around at the football game. I'm only worried about my tablemate here in the classroom. And where I'm struggling with this is to see the pain and the misery that this is causing for, what did you say, 39 students that are testing positive? This is nuts to me. This, we had, when I graduated from college and I started subbing, because I was a December grad, that was in 1979. So that was during the flu season. It was during an insane flu season, where some buildings and some schools did close for a week to sanitize and clean everything, and because they just, they couldn't, a lot of people got sick. So everybody stayed home, everybody got their group together, kind of like what we did last fall, right? I mean, it just got to be too much. This is 39 students, and you guys are killing yourselves. This makes no sense. This makes no sense. And I can't support the stupidity of this process. So my question is, because I've heard, I heard, and I think it was you, Sarah, I have to, I have to, I have to. And Debbie, you said the same thing, I have to, I have to. Who's making you have to do this, and under what authority? That, I think that's a question that I have, Ben did not answer, and I got dances. So I want to know, I need to know the answer to that.
So what I can tell you is there are health orders out there through the Ohio Department of Health that continues to mandate that schools do this. So I'm going to answer a couple of your questions. So one, you said, why are we tracing the football teams and the soccer and volleyball? Anything that impacts the school is included. So we have to do the classroom, we have to do clubs, extracurriculars, any events, if we have dances, anything like that is our responsibility. Again, I think that comes back to the county health department not having the funding. And so that is now, all area schools are required to do that. You had asked another question, and now I forget what it was. Oh, the classroom. So another piece of this is, even though we're in masks and students don't have to quarantine, we are still required by the county to trace those classrooms, because they need the names of those students to follow for pandemic reasons. So if that student ends up having symptoms, that's a confirmed case of spread, and then they have to follow up with those families. So even though it has definitely helped us not quarantine as many students, it really hasn't relieved the COVID team of those responsibilities. We've also, I think, so there's that side of it, right? The public health order. I guess internally for us, we have had four cases of confirmed in-school spread, which is new. That didn't happen last year. So I think there's also that side of it, too, that we want to make sure if we know a student's positive, and the student that sits next to them is symptomatic, we want to let them know and get them out of school as soon as possible, so now we don't have five more kids that are positive.
And that makes sense, because that falls under the flowchart.
Yeah, so there's few sides to it, I guess.
So the... Okay, so what a lot of people are saying, these are only guidelines, that's what it says, guidelines. So the thing that I got out of Ben Robinson's email was that, yes, these are guidelines from ODH to the local county health departments. So another question that was never answered to me was, is the Wood County Health Department, did they adopt this? Or did they adopt something else? Did they modify this?
They did adopt that. So we have been following that specific one all year.
Okay, so somewhere along the line, instead of just dealing with this, they've added all these other duties that you have to follow, the extracurriculars as well. So you're doing the Wood County Health Department's work as well as our own. I think that's where I get kind of upset about this, that they don't have the funding, but the schools are expected to have the funding to do their work. Now, I'm not ditsing on the health department, but I think they're creating a lot of this work that doesn't need to be created. Maybe that's where I'm getting the rub, is... I don't see why this is falling on the schools. If there was ever a case made for homeschooling, this report was it. I mean, I cannot imagine anybody who would want their kids to be part of this madness. I really don't. And here we are, the best school district in the entire region, and yeah, I'm bragging a little bit, but we are, yet look how we're struggling. And Tom, to go back to your slide, and you don't need to, but the one that had the logos of the schools in the area that have gone, were those the logos of the schools that have gone to wearing all masks? And if that's the case, look at you. There is a glaring one missing. Where's Sylvania in there? That's the school that, we got Anthony Wayne, we got the Generals in there. But where's Sylvania? And somebody told me in an email last night that Sylvania was not doing this. They were still optional. So I would like, and the lake is not in there, though they're a lot smaller than we are. So I'd rather stick with the school that is similar to us.
Yeah, Sylvania changed.
And of course, that's the Generals in Sylvania.
Sylvania changed their logo. So they're located right next to Washington Local with the star.
Washington Local with the star?
With the, Washington Local has the Panthers. And then right to the left of it is...
That's Sylvania.
Yeah, they changed their logo. That's probably why you didn't recognize it.
That's why I did not recognize it, you're right. So Sylvania is on, doing the same thing that we are now.
Correct.
Okay, well, that's really, that's good to know, that they're doing the same thing.
And I think the other Wood County schools are following the, these are pretty much the guidelines for everyone. We just felt it was important for us to put out a document that has it very much specifically spelled out. So the other Wood County schools are following very similarly the same three-foot guidelines. So that's what that's about.
Yeah, and I think... I hate to see what this is doing to our staff. We're taking on a role that we're not meant to take on. And I think that's wrong. I think it's wrong. I think if the health department and the state health department want to be dumping all of this on there, then let them find the people and let them find the money to do their job so that we can deal with teaching our students. That's our job. You can't do, Debbie, the things that you're supposed to have been doing, because you're doing everybody else's job. And I don't understand, I don't understand that. I don't, this, I guess because I'm sensitive to the work overload, having been there. I want to, I feel like we need to stand up and fight for you guys, and to fight for other public schools that are under this. And from what I understood, there were no mandates out at this time. We aren't under an emergency, so the governor can't mandate, because the legislature has now reined him in on that. The health department put out, got, ODH, sorry, put out the guidelines. So they're not mandating, because they're not supposed to. So is it falling under some sort of mandate from our local health department? And if that's the case, then the people who are angry at you, who are angry at us, need to direct that anger at the source, which is not us. They need to go to the source. And again, I argue that this is not our job. Your job is not to do the work of the health department. If the health department wants all this information, they want all the stuff that goes beyond what this says to do, then they need to get their stuff here. I don't want to see our good people go down the tubes because they're having to do another entire division's worth of work. And that, that's what I'm getting out of the presentation today. This upsets me to no end. And I don't know what to do about it. I don't know how to help you, because if we give you all the extra help that you need, it seems like all we're doing is kind of like, what's that called when you help? Like an alcoholic, and you give them a drink?
Enabling?
Enabling, that's the word I wanted. That we are enabling these government entities to do their work. If they want this information, let them figure out how to get the information. We need to stay in-house and do what we're supposed to do. And that's educate and keep our kids safe while we do that. And for 39 kids that are COVID-positive, and you guys are exhausting yourself to no end, this is...
Yeah, that's been, what, two weeks? I hear what you're saying and how you feel. I've been all over the spectrum of that, too. But I go back to, we don't want to go back to remote. We want to stay in school. We want to have very few quarantines so we can keep kids in school. So I sometimes stay away from all that orders, and who said what, and who's doing what, and who's going to find who. We got to take care of ourselves in this district. And so by, and I ask that question. So I can stay in school if I wear a mask, I won't be quarantined if I'm exposed to a positive person. Now, the same thing with extracurricular activities. Schools mandated, it's compulsory, we have to attend school. Going to a soccer match, going to a marching band, going to all these extracurricular activities, which we sponsor and we support financially, is optional and a choice. Unfortunately, at 3:30, the community majority are taking the choice not to wear a mask. That's up to them. But then, they have to contact trace. I don't know how many contract traces coming from extracurricular activities. I don't know how many are coming, you said there were a couple in school. But we don't contact trace a family's reunion, correct?
Correct, anything that is our school. So extracurriculars, clubs, sports, activities, that are our school, yeah.
So I can see the extension of the classroom, which I do believe extracurricular activities are an extension of the classroom.
Yeah.
We're not extending the mandatory masks at these events. So therefore...
So is that the solution, then, to extend masks to that, which...
Well, it depends how many more emails you want to get on that. I hear it, I watch the golfing, you watch the Ohio State-Minnesota game, or pick a contest on television. The world is not, does not have COVID after school's out, for whatever reasons. That's choice again, I believe. What we can control is what we're doing right now. We got to support the staff with help. And I believe that's what they're asking for. I hear what you're saying, Sue. But we, sometimes we have to put that aside and take care of immediate business, and that is, just get them the help they need to keep our kids in school and have less quarantines. And then we ask the parents to do their role. My liking mask or not, we need community support on this, so we can keep our kids in school. Or let's go back to last year and go to remote learning, and have all those obstacles that went our way, and parents trying to find sitters and trying to get off work, and that's a mess. We got to keep them in school. So 5,500 kids, 38 positive, two weeks in school, that's a high number. 38, two weeks in school, or two and a half weeks in school. I hate to see Debbie go back to work here soon, her office, and how many are lined up because of the weekend. So anyways, I hear what you're saying, but I think we need to take care of what we can take care of.
Yeah, Sue, I echo frustration with the state and the county level. But the reality is, is that, or at least the reality, it feels like we have been pushed off onto an island, onto an iceberg, to figure it out ourselves, with some guidance from, you know, the best they've done is given us some, well, I think mandates, some guidance, some things we need to do, and we need to do them. I'm not in favor of packing up our tents and saying, "It's too hard, we can't do it, we shouldn't do it. It's not fair that it's landed on us." Fact is, it has landed on us. So we need to do everything we can do to, I have a broken record here. Keep classes going, keep kids in school, and this is a path to do that for me.
Well, that's why I went against my own personal feelings about the masks. I talked to a couple employees this weekend from one of our health systems. I don't want to get specific. And their opinion was also that masks are about as good as a screen door in a submarine. And I thought that was, I thought of you, Tom, because I love your analogies. That's one you got to throw in your box. But the other thing that I got told, which was terrifying to me, your list of your doctors, those covered, I think, every health system that we have in Northwest Ohio. And granted, I was talking to people that were involved in one of those, not cross-grouping. They're being threatened. They are being threatened with loss of license if they do not toe the line. And my own doctor is on that list. And I've talked to her about it, and I said, "What's going on here?" And this was months ago. And she says, "It's going to get to the point where they're going to threaten our licensure." And I'm sure that's why there's a lot of those doctors on there. And to me, that, that should be a red flag to every person in the world. I think that's what's interesting about this scenario and what's happening, because it's worldwide, not just Perrysburg, not just the United States, not just Ohio.
And that's again why I say to the community, because we get the emails, and we've all had it up to here on COVID, I get that. But let's not, just take the anger out, and where they should take the anger out. Not on the school board, not on the superintendent, not on the contact tracing team, the nurses. We're trying to keep our kids in school. That's what we can do. That's my role as a board member. Let's do what we can do, let's wear the mask, because that's what the flowchart shows. Forget the science, forget what's right or wrong, forget what article you're reading and what doctor you talk to. You keep them in school by wearing masks. Okay, let's do that. So that's what I'm all in favor for.
Right, let's do that until we can get rid of, get rid of the nonsense, and that's where the battle lies. Because this doesn't, this doesn't make sense, though I got excoriated by one email that praised my letter to the editor at the same time the rest of the email was spent yelling at me because I did it for the wrong reasons. Getting masks, wearing masks to get the kids in school, but I forgot that the masks were there to keep the kids safe.
Well, and I guess everything, it depends on who you talk to, too.
Yeah, so...
Because I've certainly had plenty of physicians, community members, come up to me thanking me as a board member for the steps we've taken as far as putting masks in place. So, you know, the 80 physicians in this community telling us that it's the right thing to do is awfully darn compelling for me. You know, the logic that a, if hospital systems want to extend the pandemic, be it then go out and they're saying, "Wear masks," which to me helps end the pandemic, kind of defies logic. I can't make that connection. So anyway, you talk to people, I talk to people, obviously, on these and many other COVID-related issues. There's different perspectives.
Yeah.
And it's kind of important what our goals are. Keeping kids in-class learning safely.
In the classroom.
Is always our North Star.
Yeah.
On how we interpret all of these different conversations.
And right now, that's, this is our only choice. To keep the kids in school is to have the masks.
Can I ask, Mr. Hustler? I see on our agenda, we have only one additional hire. Is that, is there more to come? Is that, is there more to come or do we need it now? I mean, with respect to the COVID team?
Well, like I said, we've been working on another option for us. And if we, you know, are able to find somebody to be able to do that, then the next meeting, we'd be able to update you on that next step. But there is that kind of point person that we're looking towards to be that, as you heard, the duties, kind of the director, the quarterback, so to speak. That's kind of what we're looking for in the next round. So if, you know, what I hear the board is saying is, yeah, let's take that step. I don't want to put words in people's mouths, but that seems to be the consensus this morning. And we can get to work on that today, so.
And I think that's, hell, what they're doing, for sure, to get the help that they need. Interesting enough about, Mrs. Reddick, you talk about vaccinations requirements. Isn't that interesting? We know there are vaccination requirements we're referring to and not COVID requirements. We're talking about typical, every-year vaccination requirements. Okay. Anything else, Mr. Hustler?
No, thank you. Thank you both.
Thank you.
That takes us to the consent agenda. You can see items we have here, five through six. Motion to accept the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion or questions? Okay, roll call, please, Mr. Scott.
Mrs. Larrimer?
Yes.
Mr. Beddington?
Yes.
Mr. Pullman?
Yes. Motion carries. And then it takes us to any other discussion. Hearing none?
Well, I just want to make sure that I completely understand this because, like I say, I feel like I'm in a vice grip between the one side of the room and the other side of the room. I'm absolutely stunned at what they're having to do when this flow chart is so simple. You put an ORC code up there for 3707.16. I'm not sure how that, are you able to quickly go back to that? Because I couldn't, I couldn't read it.
Actually, I took this from a document that has multiple revised codes that are connected to some of these different orders. And I pulled that one for the conversation, to answer the questions that we've been getting primarily.
And Mrs. Larrimer, 3701, I think it's .13 maybe, is the Ohio revised code that mandates that schools do the contact tracing. So it's even a little bit different than this one.
Okay, say that again, 3701?
I think it's 3701.13 maybe. I can double-check, though.
Because that, I think, is something to know, is where is the authority that is forcing us into this? You know, is it just somebody saying, hey, I want you to do this, which is way beyond your scope of your positions to do? And if this is a legislative problem, then it's something that Haraz and Teresa should be made aware of and tell them to knock it off. I mean, it really, it's, to me, this is insane. This is insane. For 39 cases, you guys are just, you're killing yourselves over this. This is just nuts. And why is this so different than flu epidemics and flu outbreaks? I don't ever remember flu, we had the Ebola, we had the Ebola. Those were called epidemics. Has a flu ever been called an epidemic? Even the swine flu? And that's the one that I personally remember because I had that one twice. But we never did any of that, any of this, for any of those. And I remember when we had the swine flu, you weren't allowed to go to the doctor. You weren't allowed to go to the hospital. The only way that you were allowed to go to those places was if you couldn't breathe. And I had my hand on the phone twice to call the medics to get me to the hospital. And I thought, why bother with that? By the time they get here, I'll be blue and dead anyway. So why even bother? I'm just really, I am struggling with this. And it just, it breaks my heart of what you guys are going through because it seems so incredibly unnecessary.
Yeah, I think the one takeaway is if we don't do these things, then that means kids are going to be out of school waiting for the county to get back to them for five days, seven days versus, you know, we have parents upset because it's two days, three days now.
Well, the county has to be held to the same, to the same level of return than what they're requiring us to do. I mean, why are they asking the moon of our staff when they can sit back and say, we don't have to do it? No, no, I'm sorry. If they, if they want all this additional information and all of this additional stuff, then they should be doing it. We need to be taking care of what's happening in our walls and what's happening with our stuff. And as the guideline says, in the classroom setting. It doesn't matter where this person got their COVID. They're sitting next to me. I'm in my classroom. They're out of here. I'm asymptomatic. I can stay. And that should be the end of it. It should be as simple as what this flow chart is. So to find out that it's anything but what this flow chart is, that, to me, is a huge disconnect.
Anybody else? Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second, sorry. I'm the only one here.